...Clem.
Here.
McLanathan.
Here.
Ross.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Busker.
Here.
Bradshaw.
Here.
Keister.
Here.
And Berber Ray.
Here.
And if you could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Alderman Berber Ray.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Alderman Berber Ray, this is your meeting.
Thank you, Your Honor. I believe the first, next order of business would be the approval of the agenda. Do we hear a motion to approve the agenda?
Some second.
Thank you.
McLanathan.
Somebody.
Agenda is approved. Next item is approval of the minutes.
Actually, I think you should really call for the agenda to... So you have, you have a motion on the floor made by Alderman McLanathan, seconded by Alderman Keister.
All those in favor?
Is it a roll call vote?
Voice vote is fine.
All those in favor.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is approved. Next item is approval of the minutes from Committee of the Whole, held on January 28th, 2019. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Is this a roll call or?
Voice is fine.
Voice is fine. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Chair, I missed the second on that. Busker.
Busker.
Parker.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
You're fine?
They both said it.
I was trying to get quicker. Now, do you read this, number seven, or not? We just...
Number six.
Public comments, I'm sorry. Look at the agenda. No public comments? Let's move on then. Item number seven.
I can. Discussion regarding an ordinance amending Part Four, Title Eight Vehicles in Operation, Chapter Four Eighty, Parking Generally, Section Four Eighty, Point Sixteen of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Freeport Regarding Commercial Vehicles on Residential Driveways and Properties.
Thank you. And I believe City Manager Crowe and our legal counsel Steve Cox will make a presentation.
Yeah, Steve always is more comfortable walking out here. So when we looked at this ordinance to begin with, Steve will go more in details of it, what we found, what we had was a zoning ordinance that we had no ability to enforce that zoning ordinance. Basically, it required restrictions as we went forward. So we were, Steve and I were looking at putting something together. This has been reviewed by Chief Barklow as well. And with that, I will turn it over to Steve.
Thank you all. The summary is accurate. We've got, we do have some regulation on parking, but it's in the zoning code, which becomes very cumbersome to enforce. And what the idea is to, and it's also very unclear in terms of what, what the requirements are. It basically says that anything that's a commercial vehicle or non-owned can't be in residential. Well, that, that knocks out a wide variety of vehicles. Any number of folks drive cars that aren't owned by them, the company cars, things like that. That's not the intent to regulate, but that's, our zoning ordinance could be interpreted to read that way. And it's really more of a statement of intent pertaining to off-street parking. So it's just not covering things very well. And we've had a couple circumstances come up where it would have been, where it would be very helpful to have something on the books to be able to enforce. And for people to be able to read and understand what they can and can't do, I think that's, that's frankly unclear at this point. So what you have in front of you is a, and I stress the word draft because there are some policy decisions to be made here. And I have basically created this to, to create three, stated this to give us three separate categories. There is the, the standard passenger vehicles. And you'll see a gross vehicle weight reference there of 10,000 pounds. That's one category. It's less than 10,000 pounds. 10,000 pound vehicle gross curb weight is going to be a 16-passenger van, pretty much fully loaded. Most of your large trucks, I think the biggest pickup I could find, F-150 fully loaded out was about 8,500 to 9,000 gross vehicle weight. What would be greater than 10,000 would be a box truck. It would be an RV. It would be a much larger vehicle that's not used in a typical passenger capacity. So we already have a regulation dealing with parking on the streets. And that is covered in our, in our code. That's what you see in four eighty point sixteen A, which is basically just our existing code section, which is conformed to the new language. So that deals with parking in the public and we, you know, that, that, that we have regulated. The second part, B, says that no trucks or vehicles with GVW in excess of 10,000 pounds should be parked on any private property unless it's entirely enclosed. So if you're going to have a larger vehicle, it needs to be enclosed, or it shouldn't be there for more than 24 hours. So it needs to be in a storage facility. It needs to be in an enclosed garage, or it needs to be stored off-site in a commercial or, or manufacturing district. And then in C, we talked about trailers, campers, or pull-behinds, which also have to be either in a, in an enclosed garage or on a paved parking service located within the buildable area of the rear lot. In other words, not the required rear yard, but within the buildable area where you can build a house, or a garage, or some other structure. And then having a, again, I call it a safety valve. It says that if you've got workmen at your house for no more than 12 hours within a 24-hour period, that's okay. You're going to have that. And just for convenience sake, you'll need to have, have work vehicles there. So the, the questions that I really, that I would pose to the council are, number one, whether that 10,000 is a good cutoff. The, the rules about driver's licensing and, and what you can have and what your curb weight can be are less than, yeah, less than decipherable sometimes. And I don't suggest having those verbatim in our code, because it would just create confusion. Technically, you can drive a vehicle with nothing pulling behind on your Class D license, I believe up to 16,000 pounds. You start pulling something that's over 10,000 pounds, we start adding things into the gross vehicle weight that you're allowed, and it gets very confusing. But I should note that you could go up to 16,000 pounds on a Class D. So we're, that would be another point where perhaps a limit could be drawn if, if the council was not comfortable with 10. But again, 10,000 is really what you're going to see with a true passenger vehicle. And that's your, that's your big passenger vans. And then the idea of an enclosure, the idea of parking them in the backyard, you know, that's really subject to the council's will in terms of what, what we believe is good policy and what, what we want to see parked in front of it. So that, that's my, that's my explanation of what you see in front of you. And I'm more than happy to answer questions on any of that.
Chairman Berger? Could I ask some questions, please?
Please do so.
We tried this once before, a number of years ago. And it went south, and it went south for a couple reasons. But this has been long overdue in coming up. The, the biggest thing for this is, right now, if I called up the chief and I said, "Chief, I got a guy with a 12,000-pound truck in front of his house, and he parks it there," he'd try to fumble through something that he could give it a ticket for, and there's not really a lot there to do it. That's the important part about this. The other important part of, where it was before was that it also included side yards, okay? There's a magic thing. Remember, if we're on a corner lot, you've got two front yards, but you've got side yards with you deal with. And I know where there's people right now that are parking semis on areas that they've either just leveled off the ground, either put, put gravel on, or some of them have poured a thing. And needless to say, they're over-the-road truck drivers, they bring their truck home and park it there. Is that an issue? That's a question. And then the last one would be that, that you mentioned, you mentioned the magic word RVs, okay? RVs slash motorhomes today are about 150,000 bucks, and everybody likes to park them in their driveway and say, "Hey, I've got one," and they park it there for about half the summer. Is that an issue? I'm just bringing these up so while we're talking about this, we make sure, you know, it's on the same page. I, we have neighbors that, needless to say, use motorhomes throughout the summer. And I have no problem in the world whatsoever if some guy comes up and says, "Hey, I want to take a week to, to pack my vehicle because I'm going south," or "I'm going all over." I don't have a problem with that on a limited-time basis or something like that. But I've had people call me up and say, "You know, I've looked at my neighbor's motorhome in the side yard for five years now. What would, what could I do about that?" And the answer is absolutely nothing at the moment. So, I mean, I support this to the hilt. I just, it's a matter to me is, you know, does anybody want to go any farther with it? That, that would be my question. One of this stems from, and Lowell and I talked this morning, was up by my house, a person parks a, a dump truck, parks it right on the corner, and it has no reflective stickers in the back of it. And I've had about four or five people come to me and say, "Hey, you know, sometimes somebody's going to come around that corner and run right into that truck because it's dark blue and it's, you know, not obvious." So just some questions to talk about.
Well, great questions, Tom. They, so, under the, to, to answer your question, under the current draft, the way this would treat the RV is it would have to be basically under roof. It would have to be in an enclosed garage. Now, that's not to say that that's the only way to do it. I think, I, the point that you made is, is well-taken. In other words, we need to do something. And how we do that, how, how, where we draw the lines, how specifically it's regulated, that really is up to the council. So you, you could, as an option to, to what's presented, carve out something for RVs in particular. And you, there's nothing magical to, you know, 24 hours in a 48-hour period, or 12 hours in a 24. You could say, "No more than a week," or "No more than a month." Whatever, whatever the council feels is, is reasonable in terms of regulating that sort of thing. You could also say that those have to be parked in a backyard. In other words, if somebody wants to have an RV, they can have that, but they need to build a, a pad behind the house. Or you just specifically carve out and say you can park them in your driveway. That would be reasonable, too.
And communities do, have handled it in many different ways. The community I came from said it had to be parked in your backyard if it was going to be more there, there more than 48 hours. So they put a limit parking in the driveway for 48 hours or on the street. And that had to be parked. However, in Williamsburg in Virginia, because it was a tourist town and they attracted, they said, "You, you can go store it someplace out of the city, and then come back and load it." And it had to be moved within 12 hours.
Chairman. Alderman Bradshaw will come back.
Go ahead, Alderman.
Thank you, Chair. I'll admit it, I'm one of these that, I am probably the one that really pushed this forward to get this on the agenda. We do need something that's clarified in our ordinance. I've had, over the years, I've dealt with several people with complaints. One was a sailboat in a driveway. They were ordered to move it. Another one was a Little Debbie truck in a driveway. They're ordered to move it. I have constituents complaining right now that people are parking dump trucks on streets, and also in the ends of driveways, blocking views up and down the streets for safety reasons. It's hard to back out of driveways. It's hard to see. Another home, people are using commercial vehicles. They're parking up and down the street and in the driveways, and they think it makes the neighborhood look bad. I'm just hoping, and I guess my question is, that if you come up with a 10,000-pound limit as one of the guidelines, that the police can easily identify whether it's a specific type of vehicle based on the poundage. And from what you explained, it sounds like it'll be understandable with that limitation. There again, with the RVs, I agree with Alderman Clem. We do have several people in our community that have RVs, and I'm not sure how that should or could be handled as perhaps a separate issue. The other thing, one more thing, this really isn't a question. It's more of a statement from Manager Crowe. My understanding is, if, say, someone was to put a roof on a house, and the roofing company would need their dump vehicle with the allowed stickers and the roofing trucks, as long as a permit was pulled by the homeowner, my understanding is that vehicle could stay there for a number of days until that job was complete. Is that correct?
That is correct.
That's correct.
Now, I noticed, Todd, I would say the 10,000 pounds, his, his guys, this is actually, falls both in the nuisance, somewhat more into the nuisance inspection. Am I right on that, Todd?
That's how I would prefer it, yes.
So.
So the, the, the gross vehicle weight is a, it's a spec for the vehicle. You can look that up with, with any make and model of vehicle. It's, it's published, is one of the manufacturer specs what the gross vehicle weight rating is for that, for that vehicle. And a lot of the, well, if, if you were to receive a violation, traffic ticket or that sort of thing, it's based upon that GVW. So that's actually in the, the, the vehicle code as well. So that's why, that's why that was chosen instead of, I think the, the existing wording is simply "commercial" in nature. But it, it is for ease of enforcement, and that's why.
And as we talk through this commercial, like, I use an example, is in my neighborhood, I have a employee that, once a month, he, he works for Leshur, and he's on-call during the weekends. Well, he parks his truck in there, and we want to make sure that those individuals would still be allowed to park those vehicles within their, and, in, in their residence. But because it's marked as Leshur, it would be considered "commercial" and not be allowed to park under our current zoning ordinances.
And one more follow-up?
Yes.
Thank you. Attorney Cox, I do have another constituent that has a home-based business, that they have a trailer with saleable property within that trailer on a paved driveway. Would that be allowable? And if so, how could that be allowed?
So under, under the existing draft that you have, if that trailer is in the buildable area of the backyard.
Backyard.
So if it's not in the side yard, not, not in the front yard, but rather in the rear yard, buildable area of the, the rear lot, rear yard has a special connotation. That's, that's actually within the setback. But if you could build a garage there, if you could build something, then you could build a pad there, and, and you could park that trailer in the back. Obviously, the intent of that is so that the, the visual impact to your neighbors and to the, the street frontage as a whole doesn't include trailers or anything else other than just passenger vehicles.
One more quick follow-up. I'm sorry, just real quickly. And if they do not have a buildable area in the back, what is their only recourse? Anything?
Garage. Garage or, or store it on, on a commercial lot or within a storage facility.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Busker?
Yes, a couple things with this. I think we're going to have to look at that vehicle weight rating, because I know you said when you looked that up, a fully-loaded F-150. Did you look at the three-quarter ton or the one-ton trucks with the weight limits on there? Because I do know there are passenger vehicles. There, I've got a few people in my area that do drive one-ton trucks as personal vehicles. That, by this, that would be...
So the, the one tons, the one tons are going to be okay, where you start getting into trouble are the, the, the extended cab duallys, you know, where, where they'll, you know, those will start, those will start pushing 10. I mean, they get, it's hard to get a pickup truck that's, that's not a semi or, or something like that in excess of 10,000, but you can. And I mean, if, if something is, you know, specifically outfitted for that, you, you could hit 10,000 with a, you know, a large, if you've got a truck that's built for pulling a gooseneck or something like that, you could run into that. So I agree, you know, that 10,000 is really the cutoff of your average passenger vehicle, right? But you start getting into the heavier-duty trucks, you know, maybe you'll look at moving that number up to 12.5, or, I mean, as I said, you can go all the way up to 16,000 on a Class D. I think that's, that starts bringing in your box trucks and that sort of thing, though.
And follow-up.
Along with that, you know, these, the bigger, like, the three-quarter tons to one tons, they're going to be in that range. I mean, we've got a four-hour restriction here on these. We've got a lot of guys that go out and plow snow, not working 16, 18 hours a day. They want to go home and sleep. You know, we've got this four-hour limit here. I'd like, you know, I don't think that's long enough, you know, if a guy wants to come in, park in his own driveway. I don't think parking on the street, you know, we shouldn't be doing that. But parking in his own driveway to get six, eight hours of sleep and then go out for another round, I don't think he should have to worry about going to move his truck or getting a ticket just for doing things like that.
Well, and I think the, the four hours, the four, well, four hours wasn't any original creative effort on my part. That's what this, this, the ordinance already had in terms of parking along the street. So I just, I just adopted that. But I think the, the theory behind that is that a four-hour stop is just a, a brief stopover. It's not an overnight, it's not sleeping there. So the caution, I would, I would say, if we're going to regulate the parking of a, of a vehicle, if you start going to eight and 12 hours, then that vehicle starts becoming ever-present again. So if, it, it does solve the problem of somebody leaving something parked for months, and that happens, and I think that's maybe what, what Tom's referring to in terms of having a problem. But if, you know, if you have something where you start getting into that eight and 12 hours, now, again, you're almost storing that, that there overnight. So that's your, that's your vehicle, you're driving that, and that's going to always be at your house. And there's nothing wrong with that. It's just, it's a different thing than, than four hours.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Two, I guess we got two questions to answer, or one question. Number one, are we doing this for safety? Or number two, are we doing it to clean things up?
Yes.
Yes.
Then, then we really have to be very careful, because the one thing that you mentioned about the, the concrete, like, for a motorhome, I can take you within three blocks of my house and show you two, if not three of them, that have got pads poured or blacktop poured, and they're right in front of their house. So that's where the whole thing went south before. You know, all of a sudden, somebody comes forward, and, and Patrick used a great example. "Hey, I drive a one-ton pickup truck. You know, I, I bring it home." Should, should we, should we discuss more types of truck rather than weights of truck? You, you know, I mean, I'm all for this. It's just a matter, I, I think, we don't need to do everything in five minutes here, but let's look at it, and what's, what's the best thing to help us, you know?
Well, and, and thanks for that comment. The, the whole purpose of this is to present the council with sort of a, a, a working model to talk about this. None of it is going to be easy, because somebody's, invariably, somebody's going to get, get snagged in this that, you know, maybe it wasn't the intent. As to the types of vehicle, I would, I would encourage sticking with the gross vehicle weight, but maybe moving that up if, if you want to adjust something. And the reason for that is simply ease of enforcement. It, it becomes a very easy thing to look up the specs on a vehicle. You put in the make and the model, and you can, I can, I can tell you within five minutes what the GVW is on that.
And write on a plate inside the door, too.
Yes, yes.
Mr. Chair. Attorney, Attorney Cox, I have a question for you. I, I knew very little about this until tonight and reading about it, and it appears that something sorely needs to be done for both safety and cleaning things up. My initial concern now is for Chief Barklow and his, his team, his officers, what guidelines are they going to have? Maybe these are the procedures we're talking about now. Is somebody going to be watching somebody's house for more than 24 hours, seeing how long that vehicle's been sitting there? Or how do we get that information? Or do we, or do we depend on neighbors to call in and complain?
Well, I think, and this, Chief will be happy to hear me say this. I, I think, I think, Jim, this is, this is going to fall in the, the category of code enforcement. So you find out, the, the same way you find out about any other code violation, you know, a neighbor calls it in, or there's, there's a, you know, something occurs there that somebody from the city happens to notice a problem. So, you know, it, it falls under the, the regulatory authority of the city, and the way that it would be enforced is if, if a violation is observed, code enforcement would go in, they would write a ticket, just like they would for high grass or anything else.
Okay.
And then that would go through our administrative adjudication process.
Okay, thank you.
Right now, the way we're doing parking tickets and then probably is, they use a chalk mark, would chalk the wheel in, in the location, and they know cord what time he does it, and then he comes back and says, "Has the vehicle moved in the given number of hours?" That's the same type of, like, I'll use an example. You plow, we know when we plowed, and we come by and that, you notice that vehicle hasn't moved in the two days since we've plowed that side of the road. You know that, that, that vehicle has...
Been sitting there.
It's been sitting there.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I guess my major concern about this, having been an RV owner, in my particular residence, my driveway runs to the side, and there's no way I got enough room there to put a pad in the back. But when I had the RV and put it there, it was back in, it was out of the way, it was not obstructing and stuff. And I guess one thing kind of rubs me the wrong way is we're starting to regulate what people can do on their property. And if I may, continue quick. And the thing is, if it's a decent RV, if it's moved and used and not a piece of junk, not obstructing views and stuff and out of the way, I really don't see a problem with somebody parking it on their own property. Now, I understand that there are some that park there, think it's for four or five years, it deteriorates, it looks bad. Yes, we should go after those, I agree. But, and I hate to use my case, because I don't have anybody else to use an example. Mine was back off the street, it was alongside the house, and to have somebody have a garage to put an RV in, the standard garage will not work for an RV or a camper, it's too short. So they would have to spend money. If they don't keep it at their house, then they got to spend whatever it costs to put it out in a storage facility or something, which is going to be more expensive. So I just have a problem with saying that, "Okay, fine, you can't do this unless you do this and this and this." You know, if it's out of the way, if it's not a nice order, not an obstruction, I don't see where the problem is.
Well, and I, I think that that's, that's a perfectly valid position to take. You know, the, the comment, that is very well taken, is we're, we're telling people what they, this, this isn't regulating parking on the street. This is parking on somebody's, their, their own lot. And it is changing years of practice of not really enforcing that. So there's, it needs to be handled very carefully, because again, you could be creating a situation where somebody has to undergo an expenditure for something. One thing, just putting together a suggestion, hearing the, the questions and the comments, Alderman Clem had mentioned, you know, the, the idea of maybe specifically addressing RVs, maybe somebody's got a pad out front already. What, what we could do is state that if there's a, you know, if there's an existing parking pad there, that that comes in as illegal non-conforming, we could specifically call it that. You could specifically allow RVs and say they have to be pulled in so far so that they don't go into the safety issue, so that they don't obstruct view. You know, an RV is a, is a specific thing. You wouldn't really be getting into the, the gross vehicle weight. You would, it would almost be a specific call-out for that class of vehicle. I'm not real keen on that from a, from a draftsman's standpoint, but from a practical standpoint, it makes sense, and we can make that work.
Follow-up, Mr. Chair.
And I just want to say that I agree with the rest of the ordinance, because I have, regularly have semis and stuff parking in, well, near my house, actually. And it shouldn't be. So I, I agree with that. But I do think that we need to look at what we're doing as far as what people can and cannot park on their own, on their own property. I think that really needs, we need, really need to look at that and be very careful with that.
Mr. Chair.
Alderman Clem?
Maybe just a, a suggestion after listening. If you, if you might want to take, if you're, if you're initially trying to take in, "Okay, let's get some big trucks off the streets that are parked in there that we need to do. Let's talk about moving forward with this," and then doing the other step separately? I mean...
Trailers and campers.
I mean, trailers, campers slash cleanup slash whatever, you know. I'll throw in another example, okay? I'll throw in two, and, and they're just for conversation, they're for nothing else, okay? Everything that you see, and I'm not picking on my friend Arthur here, everything that you see in the third ward with stuff that's been parked there for years, and in the fifth ward, is now in the first ward. At some point, you got to say, "Time out. We got to stop this. We can't have five vehicles in yards. We can't do that kind of stuff." You know, so that's just something to keep in the back of your mind. The other one is, that throws you a whole different curve to this, and it doesn't have to do with large trucks, but it has to do with... to do with large, uh, trucks, but it has to do with multiple vehicles, and that's, there are, I can name two within my area that have got small businesses out of their house that run two, three trucks there, and there's always a truck or two parked there. Is, is that something else to throw in the, in the mix? You know, and I'm just doing this so we get it on board, so, when we, when we get done with something, whatever it is, if it's two, three different things, we know what that is.
And that's, I, I, I agree completely, I think that whatever, whatever's done, it just, it needs to be, it needs to be clear, both so, so that we have a good instruction manual for, for residents, so that they, you know, and so, so that if I wanna park something in my yard, I can go read the ordinance and understand what that means. Um, and also from an enforcement standpoint, be able to, um, you know, really back up what, what we're saying in the ordinance.
Follow-up on Alderman Clem's, uh, comments. I've seen, in our neighborhood, a couple of, of residences where there are two cars parked, and they've been parked there for, I can't tell you how long, and then a couple of the cars come and go, and then one around the corner on the cul-de-sac, and you think this person might be actually in the used car business, I'm not quite sure. Uh, and I think that's, uh, similar to what you're talking about, too, multiple vehicles that just sit there.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
And, again, follow-up with, uh, what Alderman Clem said, I, I, I think I agree with you wholeheartedly, Alderman Clem, that we need to address the, uh, RV, boat, and camper issues separately from this. We do have an issue with vehicles that shouldn't be parked on the street, and I think we should address that first.
So, the one thing I'll others also tell council, and I think, uh, code enforcement, community development, is we do get a lot of complaints about large business trailers being parked. So, I think if we wanna at least the trailer, my recommendation going, we'll, you know, we'll do whatever council wants here, but my recommendation is we start, because, again, our zoning ordinance doesn't allow commercial trailers to be parked, but we have no way to enforce that. So, what we do is, we get frustrated citizens yelling at us, because you says your code says you can't do this, but we don't have an enforcement mechanism for that.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Um, Manager Crowe, would we be able to address that by adding into the ordinance with parking on the street, that no commercial vehicles parked in the driveway and stuff, and leave the camper issue for a separate thing?
That's my recommendation, is we can pull the, if we pull the camper section and RV, and specifically in the, and I'll have to deal, Steve and I'll have to look at this more carefully, and work with, uh, community development and, and the, uh, chief on this, to make sure. Says right now, parking any trailer, camper, or the non-motorized vehicle, um, or other behind, is, that's what we're addressing. I think we, we need to leave from a, the area of complaints we receive, it's in the trailer, and, uh, is one of the areas that's, that we receive a lot of complaints on. Am I correct on that, Andrew?
That's correct.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
And in, in the issue of multiple vehicles in the yard and stuff that have been there for a long time, I believe, uh, he's Manager Crowe, or the police chief can correct me on this, there's an ordinance that if they're in there, they have to be licensed, they have, they have to have current license on them?
That, and, that's correct, and we do work between code enforcement and the police department to identify, they go out, the, the police tag these, work with them, they're identified through code enforcement, and then the chief sends, uh, his guys out and they tag it, uh, and if the vehicle doesn't move within s- within, was it seven days, Tom?
Um, yes, it's just, it's called a seven-day violation, um, and you have seven days to come into compliance, yeah, it's, and the license is one of those, um, whether or not it's, um, got it, uh, properly registered, um, it's operable, um, there's, um, tires are pumped up on it, so, yeah, we, we already have that, please.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair. I just wanna compliment, uh, the chief, and especially, uh, Ted Austin does a fantastic job of working with individuals all over town to get cars moved, I mean, really does. Uh, there's been stuff there that have sat there for months, and he'll go up and talk to them, hell, have it moved in no time, and, and, you know, the goal is not, whether people think it or not, the goal is not to issue a bunch of tickets. The goal is to get things into perspective, so we don't have to worry about safety issues and stuffs. So, thank you for that.
Alderman Busker?
Yeah, um, with this too, uh, Man- Manager Crowe, you brought up about, uh, you've got a neighbor that works for, uh, local heating company, that he's on call one weekend a month, or whatever. Um, the way I read this, correct me if I'm wrong, but with this, those on-call people would not qualify, so I think we need to look at that, redo that, 'cause there are many utility companies, or, or things like that, that response time is a necessary thing to have.
That's, so, you're aware, our current ordinance, our current zoning ordinance does not allow those vehicles to be parked in there, and that's why we've established the ten thousand limit to allow them to do. So, that, this addresses to allow them, if we followed our current zoning ordinance, they would not be allowed to park in there.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Just a, a stray thought for, for discussion. In a situation like Alderman Busker is talking about, where they need to park a vehicle periodically, would we be able to establish some type of permit or something to allow them to do that? I mean, along with the ordinance, if, if they have a business when they're on call and they have to have it, then establish some kind of permit to allow them to do it. I, it's just open for discussion, is the thought.
Yes, Mr. Clem.
I, I think what we're trying, uh, what we're trying to do right now is get rid of, you seem on the streets mostly, we're trying to get rid of the large commercial vehicles on the streets, not the, not the pickup trucks for, that are for local, you know, heating. Um, you're trying to get rid of the large commercial trucks that are also in driveways, um, and, you know, blocking sidewalks, things of that nature. So, um, I think you can craft something that addresses that, that would exclude some of these things that we're talking about, and then also, I am in agreement with kind of excluding kind of the pop-up campers and things of that nature, for now, I just don't see the need to do that.
It's really, the best way to exclude it is by establishing the weight limit on that. So, we just need to make sure we're, we have found the, whether it's ten thousand, sixteen thousand pounds as we go forward, and then we'll take the camper, uh, out of the section where it says parking, and the trailers there as we move forward.
Yeah, so, so what I'm, what I'm hearing, I think, for, for marching orders here, is, um, take a look at that, the, the gross vehicle weight, um, make sure that that makes sense for one tons, um, look at pushing that up, if not, um, do a specific carve-out for RVs and pop-up campers, in other words, that's a, that's, that's a decision for another day. Um, and, um, well, really, that's, that's about it, um, leaving the, the gross vehicle weight as the defining, you know, whatever number that turns out to be, but that's, that's our cutoff. Um, but pulling the, pulling the RV and pop-up campers out of there entirely. One other suggestion that I would make, and this was just, um, um, a note as I was doing my own review, uh, after sending this out, is, uh, construction equipment, you know, like you see across the street, technically not a vehicle, and I think that it, that it's intended that it applies to construction equipment as well, uh, and I would just ask the councils, okay, in terms of adding that to the, to the follow-up draft.
'Cause we have had some issues with construction equipment, particularly as we come towards the end of the building season, they'll store it, uh, in a particular neighborhood, just at an empty lot they've been working on.
Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, and I thank you, Manager Crowe, for including that, because that was one of my chief complaints I've been dealing with, that I keep going back to you about, um, why we needed this ordinance, and I do realize it has failed in the past, but I think if we can have a few carve-outs for the particulars, um, I think this can, I think we can make it work.
So, it, is the council's, um, pleasure then to move this forward to, uh, council for a first read with the, the changes, or bring it back to next month's COW with, with the revisions?
I make a motion, we move it to the next council meeting with the changes.
I second that.
So, we have a motion?
So, the next, so we have a COW, we have a COW.
R-one farther out.
Yeah, so, so our next COW is next week. Uh, now that is, we are gonna start running at that COW, we are gonna, uh, we are gonna bring, also present the capital plan, our goal is to present the capital plan, as well as our vehi- vehicle replacement plan, in preparation for the budget, so we'll add this. What, what I can do is, we can make, Steve and I can work and get the changes done, and bring them back up for your guys' review at that COW.
Chair.
I'll withdraw my motion, so we can start over then? Is that what you'd like to do?
What are you doing with your motion, please?
Yeah, I make a motion that, uh, we're bringing up at the COW next week with the modifications.
And I second that, after rescinding my first second.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Um, Manager Crowe, would it be possible to contact some of the local heating and air conditioning companies, uh, in the area, and kinda get a overview of what the vehicle weight is on the ones, for the service, for the emergency service, like Alderman Busker was talking about, get an average weight of those, and maybe we can use that as a basis to set the weight limit in this ordinance?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I can speak from personal experience, from being in the towing industry, um, in the past, that, um, one of those vehicle, the, not necessarily heating and air, but like the telephone companies and whatnot, their one tons, or their vans, they, I have run across the scales with them, and they are pushing fourteen to fifteen thousand, so we might wanna look at sixteen thousand as, as a weight limit.
And, uh, I'll correct, to, uh, Chief Barklow, I'll, that's a cutoff, we looked at the license rate.
Yeah.
Yep, so that's, that actually changes the license level, too, so the, basically that, the cutoff for the class B is at sixteen thousand, so that goes into a new licensing level, too, so, that's pretty clear.
We have a motion in a second, is to bring forward another draft, uh, the next, committee of the whole, correct? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. Read the next discussion item, please.
I'll go ahead.
Discussion regarding ordinance amending the codified ordinances of the city of Freeport pertaining to zoning and licensing of community reintegration facilities. Amends chapter twelve forty, general provisions and definitions in chapter twelve fifty, residents districts, and adds chapter eight twenty-four, community reintegration facilities.
So, I'll tee this up again, so, um, what we have found, and, uh, Chief Barklow approached me probably six months ago, the Department of Corrections has, is in the process of changing the way, uh, they're reintegrating, uh, the, the people as they release them into the community, uh, they are really looking at these reintegration facilities back into the communities, and what we did was, uh, Andrew, uh, Community Development Director looked at it, and, and we currently have no restrictions at all as to where these facilities could go. Uh, you do have a map that we presented to you, that kinda, so, these are the, um, R-six and R-seven, and right now, as it currently stands, they could, based upon their resident, based upon their number of residencies, they could go both in R-six and R-seven. So, we, we brought, Steve drafted, worked with the, all of us involved, uh, Attorney Cox did, and drafted an ordinance, we have brought this in front of the Zoning Board of Appeals, applying commission for their review, and, uh, that, and this is, we're gonna, uh, do this recommendation, uh, for you, and this is our recommendation going forward.
Further details, Attorney Cox?
Sure, um, and that's, that's a great summary. Currently, you have a, a map, I think, in front of you, showing R-six and R-seven. Um, R-six is really broken up, um, which, which makes this sort of thing difficult to regulate, and this would, as Lowell defines it, it really does, it falls into the definition potentially of a rooming house, I think it's a little bit more than that, but you could make that argument. Um, and worse yet, there's no, there's no licensing regulations, there's nothing really that the city has hands-on, if it fits in a zoning section, it's just there. Um, and obviously, bad circumstances can happen, both to the residents and, and, and the, uh, the, the surrounding residents, um, in these things, and we just wanna make sure that, that these are well-placed, they're well-managed, and, and, and that it's done in a, a safe, non-nuance-inducing manner. Um, what you have in front of you is, there's a, uh, so the concept of, of a halfway house, that's a substance abuse rehabilitation center, uh, or facility, it, it's a place that's used effectively as a, as an alternative to incarceration. So, you're let out on parole, you're let out on, uh, court-ordered, uh, substance abuse rehab, you go to one of these places. We all refer to them as halfway houses, that's the, the common parlance, but they're referred to here as a, um, community reintegration facility, because the, the methodology used is try to, try to transition folks from, from a, uh, an institutional setting, it back into the community, so they, they start pushing people out into community homes. Um, there's two sets of standards here, there's one for substance abuse rehabilitation, and there's one for, um, um, ex-offenders. Um, so, ex-offenders, um, just in R-seven, uh, which is, of all the, the, the districts that we have in town, um, that's the one that most closely wraps around downtown, and it's, it's more of a consolidated district. As you can see, R-six is scattered throughout. I should note that, that these, these facilities have nothing to do with the, um, the community facilities that we see for, um, mentally handicapped individuals, um, and that sort of thing, that, that are, that are run in all the communities, or throughout the community, and those are all allowed, I believe if they're fewer than five, it's basically a permitted use in R-one on up. Those are entirely unaffected, these are just, um, you know, transitional facilities. So, ultimately, when we're, we're gonna regulate these things from a, from a zoning perspective, we have to choose a, choose a district. Um, and it was felt that, you know, going through zoning and planning, that, that R-six was okay for the drug rehabilitation, uh, facilities, because it's typically more, it's a less intense use, and it's more, it's more heavily regulated from the, the grant funding standpoint from the get-go. Uh, the concerns about DOC is that they really, there are certain requirements, and there is just frankly, you know, for staffing reasons, for personnel reasons within DOC, they just aren't being particularly thoroughly watched. So, um, the, the important piece that, that this introduces is not only the zoning categories, so, um, that's pretty simple, pretty straightforward, that the drug rehab, um, integration facilities go in R-seven, uh, ex offender go in, or I'm sorry, R-six, ex offender goes in, in R-seven. But the important piece of it is the, the, the regulation and the licensing that's introduced. Um, you'll see, and I always get asked with, with zoning-type ordinances, what do other communities do? Most other communities that have even chosen to regulate these things simply say that these are a special use, period. Well, we've done, we've said that they're a special use in R-seven. But beyond that, once you get qualified for that use, that, nothing offers additional oversight. So, what's introduced here is a, a level of, it's a, it's a nominal base licensing fee, I think it's a hundred bucks a year, that, that has to be done, but the, the more important thing that that introduces is it requires health department inspections, it requires reporting, it effectively pulls, uh, in, city government and enforcement oversight into these, into these entities, uh, to avoid them becoming a problem. Um, and I think that that's the, that's the key component, uh, of, of what you're seeing in front of you. Um, I'm sure everybody's had a chance to take a look at it, I don't know, I can go into more detail, or I'm happy to answer questions at this point, I know we're...
So, I would, Steve, if you don't, Jack, Attorney Cox, I, I'd like to have, uh, Chief Barklow, uh, give some input on this, since he has had input going forward on this as well, so...
Sure, sure, thank you, um, Manager Crowe. Um, this come to our attention, because as you read in here, that, um, we have to be notified when somebody is released on parole, we're, we're notified anyway. Um, uh, DOC sends us a notification that says John Doe, or Jane Doe, is gonna be released, um, from this institution, and this was what they were charged with, this is the county that they were convicted in, and they're gonna be released, um, on parole. Just so you know, that the Department of Corrections, since the Criminal Justice Reform Bill that recently passed, they are anxious to parole folks, they are, they, they, that's part of the, the deal, is to get, get some of these folks back out in the community. And just so we know, too, and that we're all just, you know, um, talking here, these are people not necessarily from Freeport. Now, I'm not a- against, uh, parolees, I'm not against trying to give somebody, um, um, you know, a, a chance to rehabilitate, but these, um, folks aren't necessarily, they, they may be from, from any other community, but what has happened is when people, when they're eligible to be paroled, they have to have a parole address, and they have to have a, a good parole... and they have to have a, a good parole address. Well, these folks that are coming to these houses, they have already burnt the bridges with auntie and grandma and their wife and they, they, they've burnt those bridges. So, they, they literally have nowhere else to go. And DOC has to, has to, you know, find a place for these. And that's where this, this, this particular house comes and fills that gap. And so, if we don't regulate it, they, they're coming anyway. So, I think it's very important and I appreciate the, the steps that we've taken and Attorney Cox and, and Manager Crowe have taken to let's, let's, let's get our arms around this a little bit and, and regulate this. These, you know, they're, they're already gonna have conditions of parole when, when, when they, when they come back out. Now, there's, you know, there, there's certain conditions that they have and they'll be, have to abide by those conditions. And we'll have DOC parole agents and many times we, we help them with that. But I think that, you know, I, I think that the, the regulations that we're putting forth and Attorney Cox put forth, put a lot of effort and a lot of time into that. I think, I think these are reasonable. So, I guess if there's any questions, I'd be more heck, I'll try to answer them.
Chairman. Alderman Brashaw?
Thank you, Chair. Chief, I really appreciate your input on this and I agree, I think that what you can do here with a little bit of legislation would be helpful to our community. Speaking as a landlord, I don't take parolees into my homes that are not already on the lease. And the police department's been very good at allowing the registered landlord to have crime free housing ordinances in their leases. They, they make us aware if somebody is being released to a specific address. Say if I'd own a property and I just told the tenant they cannot accept these people in there because they're not on the original lease. So, they do need a place to go. And as you said, they're coming whether we want them or not. It's nice to be able to do some legalized, um, problem solving i- if there is going to be any ahead of time. So, I'm in support of this.
Alderman Ross?
Yes, are, are any of these homes around daycare or schools?
Currently, no.
No, that, there's, there's not, we, we know we have one right now and that's what kind of brought this forward. But I believe that there's, I think you have written in there, the ordinance, you know, certain distance amount.
And there, there's, we have some distance restrictions within this ordinance is where they can be located. I'm not sure if it, it specifically calls out schools, daycares.
Obviously, if it's sex offender, you know, they, 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 they cannot be anywhere near those, those locations, daycares, registered daycare, schools, those kind of things.
Right.
But, but I, I'm not sure if this is, this regulates that.
Under, under the existing ordinance, there's no, as, as Chief points out, if there was a registered sex offender, all those, all those-
Right, that's understandable.
But as to a, just a garden variety parolee, there is, there are no restrictions. There are restrictions of five hundred feet from one another, but that's more from a best practices standpoint. If you look at any of the other community group home models, they all require five hundred feet spacing from another one of the same type, simply because if you have a row of them, well, it's not really community reintegration. It's, you know, just another institutional setting. So, there is a restriction on how many can be, how close they can be to one another. But beyond that, there's no, no, as, as written, there is no restriction on proximity to schools or churches.
Chair. Alderman McLean?
A couple of things I wanted to see on that, and you were just hitting on one of them. As far as I saw, the only restriction distance wise was the five hundred feet from another facility. And I didn't see anything else in there. Five hundred feet from another facility does seem a little light, in my opinion. That's, I mean, what, just, it's under a tenth of a mile. So, I, I, I'd be interested in seeing, I mean, you know, for drugs, you get a thousand feet within a church and school. But I'd be interested in seeing some more dis- distance on that. The other thing that kind of struck out to me was the idea of responsible person in subsection, eight twenty-four point oh three, sub paragraph B, responsible person. And looking at whether we should have some more requirements as to who qualifies as a responsible person under that section.
Great question. And one of, one of the things that, that was discussed and I, I think could be added here, that the example I would use and the, where this was based around, really the idea of the responsible person was the liquor code. You know, when you've got an out of town owner and we've got an in-town licensee, this obviously is an entirely different thing, but it's the same sort of management concern. If you've got somebody that owns the property that lives in Texas, that doesn't do us a whole lot of good here if Chief needs to get ahold of them or something like that. The idea of the responsible person is to have somebody locally that, that's the contact person. The liquor code has a, an entire list of things that are, that would prohibit you from, from being a registered or a, a resident manager or an authorized agent. One of those is that you have a felony yourself. So, we could add some sort of restriction along those lines, e- either adding specific restrictions or, I suppose I would, I would, I would suggest that we enumerate any specific restrictions, although you could do something as, as, as easy as just cite the-
Liquor code?
The liquor code. Although-
They might not be, they might not be totally compatible, but-
Somewhat apples to some of the provisions, yeah.
Alderman Clem?
Going along with that, Peter, you know, we're saying, who, who can really, who can really have one of these and run them, number one? And number two is, there anybody in that facility at the times that monitors at these people? Or do I mean, do they just come in and park their coat and go to Florida and come back, you know?
Well, and- Obviously, the idea is that there's somebody in there running it and that's, yes, but-
And hopefully, there's a parole agent that checks on these guys, you know, from time to time. Because even if we, we get ahold of the responsible persons because of, uh, cause, you know, because, you know, John Doe, you know, is, is, is acting out, that's, ultimately, it's gonna be the parole board that revokes his parole. And that's, that's typically not very easy to do. I mean, you, even if it's another felony, doesn't automatically revoke somebody's parole. I mean, if it's a, you know, even sometimes drug possession will not revoke their parole. Obviously, any kind of domestic violence will, or if, like a forcible felony.
So, what we could do is we can put more specifics in here as to who, who, who the responsible person is in the community, much as we do with the liquor license.
Alderman McLean?
Thank you. Also, on the nuisance prohibited, paragraph eight twenty-four point oh five, the first sentence says, "No community reintegration facility which shall be operated in such a manner as to become a public nuisance." And I haven't looked at the liquor code recently, since we, probably since we last did our revisions. But is, is that section or then subsection alone enough to allow you, the enforcement, to be able to yank it? Or do we need some specific language saying that if you violate it, it's subject to forfeiture of your license? Just something to look at, you don't need to, I mean, it's a long set, it's a long code. But just make sure we got enforcement provision on that.
So, when, I know when we looked at this, one of the reasons is, is this would give community development the ability to determine, because they have a definition of what a public nuisance is when they issue their tickets. So, this was, and this would snag that so that, I mean, if we want to define it more, that I don't have any-
I'm not looking to define public nuisance, I'm looking to make sure that if they are committing a public nuisance, that triggers a revoke your license.
I got, I got you, I understand.
So, in, in answer to your question, just, just a quick look through, it's been a while since I did this. There's not, so if you look at eight twenty-four oh four, it talks about requirements for operation. And one of those is just the standard, if you look at D, compliant with and enforce provisions of the chapter. So, the argument would be that they wouldn't be eligible for licensure. I think the, the liquor code, if you look at that, there's a whole procedure for hearings, et cetera, et cetera. And that, that sort of thing, I don't know that we, we necessarily want to get into with, with these. And I think it would be more a basis for non-renewal ultimately of a license instead of an immediate, immediate pull, unless we had a, you know, a very serious violation. In which case, I think you could, under oh-four D, I think you could state that, well, you're not complying anymore, you're no longer eligible to operate. But I think that under that nuisance section, that's, that's our more serious violations. That's the intent of having that provision. So, I don't think we'd be out of bounds by having something a little bit better than the catch-all that we have and state specifically, you know, it's a violation of this section under circumstance, you know, it, it forms the basis for an immediate revocation.
And the sole discretion of and whoever you-
The licensing officer.
Yeah, okay.
Is that-
Which, under, under city code, under the city, city manager code- Code, I am the licensing officer for all licenses going forward. So, it'd be all the, when we come up for relicensing, what, what we do is we, we run the, all the department heads come and make their comments as we renew a license, whether a license should get a up check or down check.
Additional comments, questions?
Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion and move this to the February eighteenth, regular city council meeting with the, any revisions that have been recommended so far.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second.
Thank you. Moved and seconded, further discussion? We're gonna move it to a council meeting on February?
Eighteen.
Eighteen?
Eighteen.
Okay.
Counselor Powell, who's that?
Council meeting. Nineteen, okay. My apologies.
Any further discussion, Mr. Chair?
I just, I just wanted to make sure that we looked at, like Alderman McLean said, I'd be more appetite for a further distance than five hundred feet to be put in there. We could see that.
I have a minimum of a thousand, it's written down.
Thank you. All those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Next item is public comments, I believe. Are there any public comments for the committee of the whole?
Just for the-
The public, just a reminder that we're, we'll be rolling right into the council meeting next.
There being no public comments, could I have a motion to adjourn? The committee of the whole, so moved. Second. Thank you, Mr. Clem. Moved and seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned.
For sixty seconds? We should be changing attorney.
Yeah, there you go. We're gonna change attorney. Thank you, Steve.
Say a high five as they go across.
Know that Don, Don Davis, that you gotta go before, before- Kind of the name. That's what, uh, Don Davis.
What do you, what do you do?
I don't know if Don Davis-
Those laws look like from the old school.
Houston, we have a- Yeah, I know, yeah, I believe that. I never put it in, let's put it in. I'm so used to bringing it at your home, so I imagine we had it on today without the-
I understand.
I don't know.
No, I'm not.
Oh, he's standing right there.
Yeah, I miss him.
You know him?
Yeah, I do. Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
And he saw the picture of George Gorbachev.
He's got all these pictures. Not one of me.
Can you hear me? Okay, Dan, would you mind giving the invocation this evening?
Good evening. Lord, I thank you for each member of, of this council, each city leader. Lord, I just thank you that you have blessed them, Lord, and I, I pray continued blessings over them. Lord, I just believe you for provision within this city. I just thank you, Lord, that there is opportunity, Lord, that where we see problems, we see actually opportunities to do new things, to have new ideas to come in. And Lord, we just thank you for that transition of the way we think. And Lord, I, I thank you for your blessing on, on each person, especially those who are putting themselves in harm's way, all of the firefighters, all of the policemen. Lord, just that you are protecting them, protecting their families, and helping them to serve truly from their hearts. And Lord, I, I declare a blessing over this, this entire council, that wisdom comes forth in every decision and that your name is praised, Jesus, I pray.
Amen.
Thank you. Now that it is six oh eight, we'll officially call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, could you please take the roll?
Mayor Miller.
Here.
Alderperson's Clem.
Here.
McLeanathan.
Here.
Ross.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Busker.
Here.
Brashaw.
Here.
Keister.
Here.
And Berberay.
Here.
Okay, and if you could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Alderperson Berberay.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll start with item number one, which is the approval of the agenda. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion made by Alderman Brashaw, seconded by Alderman Keister for the approval of the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. Item number two is the approval of the minutes from the regular meeting from January twenty eighth, twenty nineteen. Is there a motion for this approval?
So moved.
Seconding it.
We have a motion made by Alderman Keister, seconded by Alderman Ross for the approval of the minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. Public comments, we have no one signed up currently, so we will move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda is, is considered to be routine in nature. We'll act as one motion unless there's a member of the council that'd like to have something removed for further discussion. Is there any further discussion needed? Seeing none, the consent agenda consists of approving and placing on file the minutes from the zoning board of appeals meeting from November first and December sixth, twenty eighteen, the minutes from the planning commission special meeting from November fifteenth and the regular meeting of December thirteenth, twenty eighteen, the minutes from the historic preservation commission meeting, November thirteenth, November twentieth, and December eighteenth, twenty eighteen, the minutes from the liquor commission meeting for December thirteenth, twenty eighteen in the public, and the minutes from public hearing for the community development block grant project from January nineteenth, twenty nineteen. Also is B, the adoption of resolution twenty nineteen oh nine for the temporary closure of streets for the annual Memorial Day parade for May twenty seventh, twenty nineteen, and the approval of the finance bill is payable in the total of five hundred and sixty-two thousand, one hundred and forty-six dollars and forty-seven cents. Is there a motion for the approval of the consent agenda?
So moved. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion made by Alderman Busker, seconded by Alderman Berberay. Madam Clerk, could you please take the role on the passage of the consent agenda? Berberay.
Aye.
Clem.
Aye.
McLanathan.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Busker.
Aye.
Brasshaw.
Aye.
And Keister.
Aye.
Motion passes eight to zero. Thank you. I, to item number five, we have a presentation to council for the plaque that was salvaged from the old city hall, and the presentation will be made by Steve Schlumpf.
Hi, I'm Steve Schlumpf, I own Royal Oaks Antiques, and I was able to save some of the pieces from city hall. And tonight, I want to donate it back to you. And so, people of Freeport, come and visit and see that we do save things in Freeport. So, I'm not an auditor, so I just wanted to...
Art, you'll be happy.
Yep, Art, you...
I knew it.
You really wanted to see it, so there it is.
Good job.
Very good.
I have thirty hours of just labor in that. The wood is from framing, so, and the thing was made out of plaster originally and in horsehair, so there's, it's very, very heavy. I made a tripod, so you guys can move it wherever you want. So...
Well, thank you, Steve, we really appreciate it. We know you have spent many hours in working on those salvaging things, and so the entire community says thank you.
And I thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve.
Item number six, our appointments. Madam Clerk, could you please read this for the record? Acceptance of an appointment of Kelly Chesney to the Public Library Board of Trustees to replace the position vacated by Larry Pittsley, effective immediately. Madam Mayor. Alderman Brasshaw. I'd like to make a motion to approve the appointment.
Second.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Clem.
I'd just like to bring up that a few constituents have come to me regarding this appointment. The person is an absolutely wonderful person, in fact, has bailed out many of things for the city in the process of going to greater Freeport partnership, such as many of the events for Christmas time, and then the fall that came up, and is a great person. I have a couple of questions as far as, people have asked me to just come forward with the blessing of the library board, or did we just pick this, or is this the fourth vote so we can put in God we trust on the building? And all those have come from constituents, so I'm just asking that.
Well, typically, I believe, Alderman Clem, that it's, it's not discussed within boards, it's a position that every mayor has those appointments, and the council has the right to either approve or disapprove. Kelly Chesney came to me with, actually quite some time ago, concerning wanting to be a part of some type of board, and she felt that the library board just seemed to be a good fit for her. She's probably one of the greatest promoters that I know for all of Freeport. So I guess that's up to the council.
Mayor. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Alderman McLanathan.
And the only other thing I'll say, and I know Alderman Clem was just echoing some questions in regards to that, but I'd just caution us very strongly, want to not be going down this road of certain litmus tests in regards to, are you gonna vote on a certain issue that may or may not come up in front of the board? That's setting a very dangerous precedent. And I realize, Alderman Clem, you aren't advocating that, but since that was raised in one of the things, I think it's very important that we stay away from something like that. And I do want to affirm that, in regards to the appointments and things of that nature, that they come from the mayor, they don't come from the boards.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Clem.
Peter, I appreciate what you're saying. I believe in a lot of what you said, I also believe that if it's a partnership between the city council or the city and its entities, there ought to be some discussion whatsoever about who goes on the committee, not just a, here's an agenda, oh, by the way, we're putting this person on the thing. And I just stated what people stated to me, so, thank you, I appreciate it.
Further discussion? Seeing none, we have a motion made by Alderman Brasshaw, seconded by Alderman Parker for the acceptance of Kelly Chesney to the library trustees. Madam Clerk, could you please take the role? Berberay.
Aye.
Clem.
No.
McLanathan.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Busker.
Aye.
Brasshaw.
Aye.
And Keister.
Aye.
Motion passes seven to one. Thank you. Item number seven is the second reading of ordinance twenty nineteen oh-seven. Could you please read this for the record? An ordinance authorizing the sale of certain items of personal property by the city of Freeport. Fire chief.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. These are just items that we had around the station, some have been added to by Public Works, and I believe City Hall as well, there's a couple of items, but it's just surplus, we're trying to get rid of some things, clean some, some stuff up around the stations. If you have any questions?
Since there are no questions, then, Madam Clerk, could you please take the role for the passage of ordinance twenty nineteen oh-seven? Berberay.
Aye.
Clem.
Aye.
McLanathan.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Busker.
Aye.
Brasshaw.
Aye.
Keister.
Aye.
The ordinance passes eight to zero. Chief, would you mind just giving the viewing audience the rundown on if they choose to put a bid on one of these things? Where do they go, what do they do, and what's the timeframe?
It's gonna be put out on the, as far as a closed bid, on a website, it'll be on the city website, is that correct?
That's correct. It'll be on the city website, and the way, you can bid on an individual item or the whole lot. We, the way it has done in the past is, we ask for bids for each one of the pieces of equipment individually as we go forward, and then we award it to whoever is the highest bidder. The last bidding, I know Steve was involved in the last bidding, we actually had eight different bidders, but we only had two or three that had bid on every piece of item, every item that we had. So, don't feel that you need to bid for the whole lot, you can bid, pick the items that you want to bid on, and bid those, then we award them, and we notify the bidders. Now, we have had in the past, once we notified the bidder, and they looked at the piece of equipment, they decided that they did not want to accept it, so we, we held that back, so...
So, did you, did you say when this goes up for bid and how long?
It should be, we'll be putting out to bid, we do not have the bid package, it should be within the next two weeks, we'll be placing it out.
Okay.
Mayor.
Alderman Keister.
Just a very quick question, with some of these items and stuff, are they have the ability to view them prior to, or when they purchase them?
No, we, we offer, they're available to bid, to view at any time, and I would tell a wise bidder, and I think Steve would argue, would view everything before he bids on it.
And the fire department equipment's located at Central Fire Station, and Public Works would be down at City Yards, is that correct?
And, and City Hall equipment, they can contact Diane to look at it.
Okay, we will move on to item number eight, which is the first reading of ordinance twenty nineteen oh-eight. Madam Clerk, could you please read this? An ordinance amending chapter two forty-two, fire departments, section two forty-two point zero-eight, lieutenant of the codified ordinances of the city of Freeport, rescinding a previously adopted ordinance, allowing the city of Freeport Fire Department to temporarily go above strength in rank of lieutenant, reducing the number of lieutenants. Fire chief.
Thanks, Mayor. If you remember, last fall, we promoted a lieutenant to go above strength while we were waiting to get our district chief list completed and approved. Once that was approved, January first, the district chief, we promoted one of them, and then that took care of the number of lieutenants that we were over strength on, so at this point, we'd like to just reduce the ordinance back to the nine lieutenants that would be approved.
Mayor.
Alderman Keister.
Make a motion to move us forward.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion made by Alderman Keister, seconded by Alderman McLanathan, to move ordinance twenty nineteen oh-eight on to the next regularly scheduled meeting, unless there is something that Alderman would like to discuss. Mayor. Alderman Brasshaw. Is there any expediency or any reason why this shouldn't be pushed through tonight, since it's just housekeeping?
No reason.
Any further discussion?
Mayor.
Alderman Clem.
One of the things I had to ask Chief Allen, and maybe it's for a separate thing, for, would be for a separate entity to do it, was about the individual transfers and that kind of stuff, on the ambulance fees.
That's a different ordinance.
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, I went off, I apologize, I apologize.
Alderman Keister, or Alderman Keister, did you have something you wanted to add?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor made by Alderman Keister, seconded by Alderman Busker for suspension of the rules. Suspension of the rules is non-debatable and was passed by two-thirds majority. Madam Clerk, could you please take the role on the suspension of the rules only? Berberay.
Aye.
Clem.
Aye.
McLanathan.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Busker.
Aye.
Brasshaw.
Aye.
And Keister.
Aye.
That motion passes eight to zero. Thank you. So now before you counsel is the final passage of ordinance twenty nineteen oh-eight. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, could you please take the role on the passage? Berberay.
Aye.
Clem.
Aye.
McLanathan.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Busker. Sorry. Brasshaw.
Aye.
Keister.
Aye.
And the ordinance passes eight to zero. Thank you. Item number nine is the first reading of ordinance twenty nineteen oh-nine. Could you please read this for the record? An ordinance amending chapter two forty-two, fire department, section two forty-two point forty-six, charges for ambulance services of the codified ordinances of the city of Freeport to restructure ambulance fees. Fire chief.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the result of last week's COW and the ambulance fees that we were trying to implement with the cap on this, on the consumer price index of five percent on these, so we won't go over that if it would raise above that in an annual, on an annual basis.
No, Madam Mayor.
Alderman Clem.
Just a quick question, 'cause you and I had just briefly talked about it by email. One of the things I had to ask the chief about, if, as we have ever considered doing normal transfers. In other words, if somebody's got a person that's home and bedridden, and they need to go to the hospital for a procedure to have done and brought back home, if we would ever consider doing that? You know, that's one of the things that the private ambulances do now, but is it, is it a market that we even want to talk about or not? You know, that's, was my only question.
At this point, we'd have to do a lot of research on that to really make sure, it would be a viable moneymaker for the city to get into. Obviously, there's private providers that do that currently. If there was ever, you know, nobody that was providing that, or the service that we needed to provide was more than the privates could handle, maybe that would be something that we would need to kind of dive into, but it'd take a lot of research and a lot of background to find out, to make sure...
Mayor.
No, no, I appreciate it, thank you. And the last thing you'd need, you'd want to do is get yourself in a position that you need another ambulance and X number of people to do X, Y, and Z, but that was just a question, so thank you, I appreciate it.
Mayor.
Alderman Keister.
Yeah, I want to speak on that real quickly, 'cause I can tell you for a fact that when I first come on the fire department many years ago, we were doing non-emergency transfers. And, yeah, it was, that kept us busy, it brought in some money. But the problem you're gonna have, and I actually had this happen on a number of occasions, you're gonna have a critical call, that you're doing a non-emergency transfer, and you're gonna go right past this place that you can't stop because you've already got a patient in there. There was a very big stickler point at the time that we did that, and having done it and been through it, as long as we have privates in the community that will handle it, I think we need to stay away from it, 'cause we're gonna wind up, like I said, in situations where you go right past a call that's critical, and you've got somebody going to the hospital for a doctor's appointment. So, I would never be in favor of going back to those days.
Appreciate your input.
And Parker.
I have to agree with Alderman Keister. One is, we don't want to get in competition with private for-profit people for it. I think here, we're gonna start competing with them, well, we're gonna charge this, I don't think we want to get in that position to be competing with private business for it, and again, like he said, we don't have that many ambulances, and we have emergency calls, and all of a sudden, you gotta go, so, I'm against that one, too, so...
Mayor.
Alderman McLanathan.
Last meeting, we talked about our basic CPI versus maybe an industry. One, what does the all-urban CPI encompass? Why did we choose that one, and how did that compare towards the other CPI, or basically the across-the-board CPI? We looked at the, I think the EMS one was roughly two point eight percent, and I'm not sure, does water and sewer, or they do a specific one?
They're, they're a very specific one. So, when we looked at the CPI, EMS is not called out as, in previous CPIs, it was, it rolled into a medical CPI, so the standard CPI, medical tends to run higher because of cost of drugs. This last year, it was called out, but previous years, it was not called out, EMS was not called out in the cost, and I'm not sure why that was. It was, it was in a general medical line, and that, like I said, they've only broken it out within the last couple of years, so that we don't have much comparison as we go forward.
Mayor.
Alderman Keister.
Make a motion, we move this forward.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion made by Alderman Keister, seconded by Alderman Parker, to move ordinance twenty nineteen oh-nine to the next regularly scheduled meeting. Is there any further discussion? Then we will move on to item number ten, which is the first reading of ordinance twenty nineteen ten. Madam Clerk, could you please read this? An ordinance amending chapter two forty-two, fire department of the Code of Ordnances of the city of Freeport to provide for a new section two forty-two point fifty-four to establish charges for lift assistance. Thank you. Fire chief.
Thank you, Mayor. This was the presentation, again, given last week at the COW, that would charge an engine crew, for an engine crew, a hundred and forty-five dollars per hour to be billed at a minimum of a half-hour charge, anytime we give assistance to private ambulances, nursing homes, those type of facilities, extended care facilities.
Mayor.
Alderman McLanathan.
Just to kind of summarize from last week, this is applying solely to those situations where private sector businesses are calling in your personnel to assist on services that that private sector business is then billing the individual for, and currently, we do not receive any compensation for. That's correct, and/or understaffing to use our, our personnel to supplement their manpower.
All right. Thank you. Madam Mayor. Alderman Brasshaw. Thank you. And Chief, I believe at our last meeting, you stipulated, too, that we did do an assist to a facility, and one of our firemen was injured, is that correct?
It was with a private ambulance that that injury occurred. It was at a, at a private home, at that point.
Thank you.
What we did have is over Christmas timeframe, the, one of the facilities, their lift unit had been broken, and rather than repairing it, they called us for lift assistance, and because of the, the circumstances under it, we had both to respond, both an ambulance and a fire truck.
Alderman Park.
Just to clear it up, if I remember right, we would not be charging the person we're lifting, we're charging the private service that requests our help.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor.
Alderman Keister.
And just to clarify, too, this only applies to businesses, private residents that have issues with that, will not receive a charge for it, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Busker.
I know I kind of touched on it last time, I didn't see anything in there. For these nursing homes, you know, sometimes, like, mechanical failures of hoier lifts happen, and I don't see, you know, I don't see them hiring a whole bunch of staff. Is, is this going to be a cross-board, as soon as you're called out, we're billing out? Or is it going to be for habitual offenders calling out? Because one, a nursing home calling out for an assistance if a hoar breaks and there's nothing wrong with the patient, you know, or if they're in the middle of moving the patient and the machine, and power dies or something, they, they don't have the staff, I mean, they shouldn't get, they, you know, those companies are paying property taxes on that building, you know, getting, they're still members of the community. Are we going to bill everybody, or is it just going to be kind of a case-by-case basis?
It won't, so my guidance on, on, for my department has, is, dealing with it, we, we follow the ordinance because it is the decision of the council, if we don't follow the ordinance, it's not my, my job is we, is to follow what you have me place in ordinance. It's not my job to interpret the ordinance, that's council's job to do that. So what you have here is, we won't do it on a case-by-case basis, our job is to follow what is in here. If you want to, if we want to change on a case-by, we'll need to change something within the ordinance.
Madam Mayor. Alderman Brashaw.
Thank you. Alderman Busker, I understand you're worried about public safety, I truly believe with this ordinance though that they could still call for that assist if their lift assistance machinery broke, but they would be charged an hourly rate, and it's actually a very reasonable rate and it would be charged to the facility. So on those rare occasions that something like that would happen, I don't think it would be life or limb to the patient because they do have that service available to them at a, a very reasonable cost.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Clem.
Two things, and I think one of them, keep in mind also, the person that's at, at that nursing home is paying by the month to be there, so they're already getting funded. If they choose to short, shorten the staff that they have, that's an issue. I understand it's very hard for many of them to get CNAs and to get nurses to do so, but also the last one that was brought up to us, the person that got hurt, costs us thirty thousand dollars in overtime. The other thing I'd like to take a look at is item number two and item number four here in your charging or in your billing. I can't see a minimum of a half-an-hour charge, it's going to take a half-an-hour to get you out of the station, get you down there, get you back and everything else, you know, I, I just figured, you know, seventy-five bucks is, a hundred and a half is cheap for sending a minimum of two guys down there in a five-hundred-thousand-dollar ambulance. Just a question.
Typically, I base the half-hour minimum charge, if we go out to a residence and we do a lift assist, typically, typically, I would say that takes a half-hour, maybe less, but at, at a minimum, we would, we would want to charge that. If it, if it goes over that, that thirty minutes and we have, you know, more than that invested in it, we'd charge that hour.
Any further questions?
Mayor.
Alderman Keester.
I think this is a very good idea, and I understand your concern, Alderman Busker, but the fact of the matter is, if we don't do something like this, we're wide open for abuse, and it has happened already from businesses that don't want to hire to use us to take care of it. This still makes us available to help, but they're a profit organization, we're going to get some reimbursement for what we need, and I think it's, I think it's a good idea, and I think it's going to cut down some of the abuse that has, that has happened in the past.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Busker.
I understand that, you know, that happens, but I, I can see it happening already viewing what happens in nursing homes and with their staff, that the problem I see is, it's going to come down to the administration of that building is going to let the staff know that we're going to get charged, so don't you call them, no matter what, and we're going to end up seeing good, good people that are wanting to do the best, they're going to overexert themselves and we'll see more nurses and CNAs getting injured trying to do something that they cannot or should not be doing because they're afraid that they could get penalized. I know it's, it's part of their, you know, it's that facility's problem, but I can, I can see that happening.
Mayor.
Alderman Keester.
Motion to move it forward.
Second.
We have a motion made by Alderman Keester, seconded by Alderman Clem to move ordinance twenty nineteen ten onto the next meeting, is there any further discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Clem.
Just a reminder that there will be discussion next time on it, so, you know, if somebody's got something or wants to bring it forward, you know, my mo, my second wasn't just to move it out of the way, it's a matter, if you want to discuss it more, we can, but it's just a matter of keeping it moving forward.
Anything further? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number eleven, which is the first reading of ordinance twenty nineteen eleven. Madam Clerk, could you please read this for the record?
An ordinance amending chapter two forty-two, Fire Department of the Code of Ordnances of the City of Freeport to provide for a new section two forty-two point fifty-five to establish charges for vehicle accidents, extrications, and fires.
Fire Chief.
Thank you, Mayor. This also was presented last week at the COW, and this was the Fire Department's ability to charge the at-fault or responsible party involved in a car accident, a vehicle extrication where we would have to use more invasive tools, and car fires, what we excluded was the structure fire portion of this.
Your Honor.
Alderman Parker.
I'm personally against this for a few reasons, and one is ninety-nine percent of the accidents happen on city property, that becomes our responsibility to clear it up, and the police don't get paid to go to vehicle accidents, so I'm totally against this. I understand you recommended it, but there's no way we should be charging people in a vehicle accident on a city property because that intersection's blocked, we got to get them moved, we can't get them moved until the injured people are out of there, and we got to open it up. And everyone, so, we take care of the streets, the street department takes care of them, we plow them, the fire, the police department has to enforce the laws, that we should not have to get paid extra to bring the ambulance out if we need them, so, just my opinion, thank you.
Madam Mayor. Alderman Brashaw.
Thank you. Chief, am I right in restating what you told us before that most vehicle licensees that have car insurance, that this is already billable on their insurance for coverage such as this? That it would come directly from their insurance company that we're already paying for on our car insurance?
Correct, these, those are already built into the insurance policy.
Is that every insurance policy, in your opinion?
That's, yes, from what we've been told in this, it is built in.
In the state of Illinois, it's already built into your insurance call, there are, what, a hundred and ninety communities that are already charging this going forward? It's one-way as the fee.
Mayor.
Alderman Keester.
Also, as per our discussion at the last meeting, if the person is hauled in the ambulance and these charges will not be levied against them, that is correct?
Correct, if the, yes, if the at-fault party is the one that's hauled, that is the only billing mechanism we would have at that point, is to bill for the ambulance fee.
So it wouldn't be double-dipping, they get the, they get the extrication fee plus the ambulance, they just get the ambulance bill?
Correct.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Alderman McLanathan.
Thank you, out of the three policies that we looked at, this one comes across to me as the most discretionary, I think, of the three. We, in the first one, we already had rates, and it's a question of, you know, are we going to keep coming back every two, three, four years and say, well, do we have to adjust our rates, and here we're, you know, you're putting in a flat rates, and then you're adjusting to the CPI, so it's an issue that kind of resolves itself. Under the last one that we talked about, we have private companies basically bringing your men in for work, and then, well, work that they can get billed for, but we don't get compensated for this. Again, it feels more discretionary, and can I make a justification for pretty much any fee at some point? Sure, I could probably argue for it, but I'm more of, not necessarily for all the same reasons, but I'm of the same vein, I think, as Alderman Parker here, in that I, I don't believe we need to assess this fee at this time.
Further discussion?
Your Honor.
Alderman Parker.
One thing I want to throw out, you brought up at, at fault, you're talking about who's at fault for the accident?
We, we actually changed the verbiage in that to the responsible party.
Responsible party, what do you mean by that?
Well, and, and if we were talking about at fault, there's a lot of times where the at-fault isn't determined at the scene, so it, it, so.
What I was going to say.
Right, right, so we change it to the responsible party, the person that was responsible for the accident. If it's one vehicle accident, they're responsible, if there was more than one, it would get into a little bit of a, we'd have to wait for a determination by the police department.
And then the police department don't have that final determination, they charge, but the courts have the final determination.
Right.
So they give me a ticket and I take it to court and they're found not guilty, then that doesn't matter either, so, okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Clem.
Chief Allen, just a question, I think some of the things that Alderman Parker brings up are valid, but would this have any difference whatsoever, I don't believe it would, I'm just asking it, in how we dispatch or anything that we do at that accident scene, whether we have insurance, we don't have insurance, or anything?
No, not at all, it would just, we would dispatch, we'd business as usual, we would, if, if we send equipment to that scene, it becomes billable, that's all there is to it.
Okay, thank you. Mayor.
Alderman Ross.
Okay, this may seem a little far out there, but I got to ask, when you get to an accident scene, and you see that you have to extricate the subject there, but the way I'm looking at it is, I've been to an accident scene and just, I had to direct traffic, but the thing about it is, it's part of the job. I hate to say it like that, I mean, with all due respect, towards everybody, it's part of the job. The police officer do not get any pay from the insurance company for directing traffic. And like you said, it's not a great thing to say, but it's got to be asked. I just think it's all part of the job. That's it.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Clem.
Maybe this is just coming from a different thing, but I want to throw it out because there's a bunch of different things going back and forth here. One of the things keep in mind is, the city has done absolutely nothing to raise anybody's taxes whatsoever, and prices keep going up. Just look at this, and I, I say to myself, theoretically, you know, how often, let's say we've got ten accidents, how often do you have to extract somebody?
It was, I think the numbers last week, it's six or seven times, we don't have a lot of extrications, it's just because we don't have the high speed in town.
So, so basically, if you're looking at it, if we're looking at it as a funding thing, which obviously we're looking at it as, you know, we're going to be at the accident, whether it's funded or not. So you could easily basically say that you're going to pick up five, six-hundred dollars in accident.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Mayor. Alderman Brashaw.
Thank you, I'd like to ask a theoretical question, if I was driving, say, in St. Louis, Missouri, and I got in a vehicular accident and had to be extricated, and they had this legislation, would my insurance just cover that cost then, it wouldn't be billed to me?
No, nobody personally will be billed, it would just be the insurance company.
So if we legislated this and it was in our city of Freeport to be a charge, and say it was somebody from St. Louis that was traveling up here and had a vehicular accident in the city of Freeport and had to be extricated, would they be charged the same fee as a Freeport resident?
Yes.
So it doesn't necessarily have to apply to locals, it can apply to anyone that's driving through our city?
Correct.
And is that a reasonable charge compared to other communities? I mean, are the fifty percent or more of the communities that have this legislation, or fifty or more percent less that do?
This was the average of what Andre's billing service that we have, that's the service we use, this is the average that they bill for each individual.
Good question, question is.
Chief, she's asking, how, how many communities, what is the percentage of communities that are doing this?
Percentage, I would not know, there's a hundred and four communities that Andre's personally does now in Illinois. That, there's other billing companies that do more with, I know Moline uses a different billing company, and, and they, they bill. So there's, there's different communities all over, but Andre's themselves in Illinois has a hundred and four that currently do this.
One more follow-up, please. Thank you, the reason I ask that question, because if our insurance companies are indiscriminately charging every policyholder the insurance premium to include this charge, and I didn't even know I was paying it, there must be a reason why if, you know, more than fifty percent of the communities do charge, I guess I would like to know that. I guess I'll contact my insurance company and ask those questions.
Mayor.
Alderman Keester.
I agree with pretty much a lot of what was said here tonight, but to go on what Alderman Clem was talking about, we do need to be concerned about revenue sources and stuff to be able to keep the community going with the, you know, with what the cost increases are. This is a way to add a little bit more to the coffers and not hurt the community, people in the community. It's not going to come out of their pocket, it's going to come out of the insurance company. So we're not putting another burden on the city of Freeport or on the residents of the city of Freeport, but we're also opening up a possible revenue source, it's not going to be a tremendous one, but it's going to help. I mean, I mean, that's what, another way to look at it, I think.
Mayor.
Alderman McLanathan.
Chief, can you expound, I mean, I keep hearing it's just going to be in the insurance companies, not going to impact people, but isn't it true that pretty much anytime you have a claim on your insurance in some form, it affects your, your rates down the road? When you, if, if it's the responsible party or at-fault party, they've had the accident already. So the insurance goes toward that policy, so they're going to, they're going to go after the money, whatever accident, whatever damage has been caused, and those charges as well. Now, I know there's no indication that would show that insurance rates as a whole in the area go up because a community would put this ordinance into place, that as a person, the, the claim, you've already, you already are going to be making that claim if you've had an accident, or you've injured somebody in the process. But it's adding additional cost to the claim, isn't it? There's only, from what I understand, as a whole, there's only so much money per claim, and this company, the billing service, goes after what should be coming to the Fire Department. So that's why they're able to collect up to ninety percent of the document, well-documented claims, is they go after it, and they're going after it on our behalf, and that's why they charge a higher percentage of their fees as well, it's twenty percent as opposed to the six percent that the ambulance fees are.
Alderman Barbara Ray.
Chief, following up the concept of a revenue source, do you have any idea what would have been raised in the last calendar year for these three sets of fees roughly?
Yeah, roughly, I had a range, it was between about fifty-seven and seventy thousand dollars, right in that range. It depends on call volume and how many.
But that was an average for last year?
Correct.
Thank you.
Alderman Parker.
Real quick and last, you said that the company that does the billing for you, they take twenty percent of the fee then?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
That's twenty percent of every fee, correct, Chief?
On the fire billing side of it, correct.
Every time we run an ambulance at all, and we're charging for the ambulance, which we are charging the, how, the insurance policy, they, they get twenty percent of it.
Yeah, and, and that's, that number I gave you, fifty-seven to seventy thousand, that was with the twenty percent already taken out.
Okay.
Well, what's the council's pleasure?
Madam Chair.
Alderman Keester.
I think under circumstances, I'd like to refer this to the next committee of the hall, for further discussion, because I think there's some, a few answers that need to be, or questions that need to be answered yet, so I make that, I make that motion.
I'd second that motion.
So you want to add this to, to next Monday night's meeting?
Yes, ma'am.
The one thing I will bring up is that Chief will not be here for the next committee of the hall, for council. So we, we can put this on the next committee of the hall, but if you want Chief's expertise here, he will not be here. So we would have to push it to the March Committee of the Hall.
Madam Mayor. Alderman Brashaw.
Will there be someone to sit in for the chief, that he could argue?
One of his two deputy chiefs, so I, it's up to you, Chief.
Yeah, I'll be leaving, actually, probably wouldn't be a good fit at this point, just because I wouldn't have time to, to brief everybody on what needs to be done, and it might not be a bad idea either to have Andre's come back and give them time as well to kind of explain this and have them on hand, if anybody would have questions about the intricacies of it.
So the timeframe again, what you were looking at?
Well, so we.
Well, so we, so the council's aware, we are doing, we have committees of the whole for the budget, starting...
Next week.
Next week. So every, before every council meeting, we're gonna have a committee of the whole for the budgets as we go forward. So we could put it on one of the future committees, because this does affect our budget numbers for whether or not we pass this, what we're gonna be using for fire going forward.
Mayor.
Alderman Keister.
I'd like to amend my motion to the March meeting to allow Andre's and the Chief to be here to answer questions and move this, and move this forward from there.
Is there a second?
I'll second it since I won't be at that meeting.
Okay, we have a motion made by Alderman Keister, seconded by Alderman Clem. We're moving this ordinance, twenty nineteen eleven, onto the March Committee of the Whole.
Madam Mayor, if I could, I'd just really like to thank you guys for the information you've had and everything on it and the discussion on it, because it's extremely important to get to both sides. And the other thing is, as you look at this, if it's, if it's out there and it's not being used and we're not taking advantage of it, that's one thing to consider. But on the other side, like, like everybody brings up, you know, there's a certain point you stop charging for stuff, so good discussion, but thank you guys for having the information.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we will move on to the... Okay, so we will move on to item number twelve, which is the adoption of Resolution twenty nineteen zero seven. Madam Clerk, could you please read this?
Resolution of the City of Freeport authorizing execution and amendment of federal fifty-three eleven grant agreement.
Director Zupkov.
Thank you, Your Honor. This item essentially routine in nature annually regarding Pretzel City area transit. The city, of course, receives Federal Transit Administration fifty-three eleven funds and is eligible to apply for funding through I.D.O.T. for the pass-through funding from the federal government. This agreement's a yearly grant. Receive the grant funding from the federal government through the state of Illinois. The council approved the grant application at a prior meeting, and this resolution in front of you is to approve the grant agreement. Once the grant agreement's approved, we can begin to receive reimbursement funding on expenditures for this fiscal year from the federal portion of the grant funding, and we'd ask for approval of this resolution.
Mayor. Alderman Brashaw.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion made by Alderman Brashaw, seconded by Alderman Busker, to approve Resolution twenty nineteen zero seven. Is there any further discussion? Director Zupkov, there is no match on the city's level for this, correct?
No, there's not.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, could you please take the role in the passage?
Burberry.
Aye.
Clem.
Aye.
McLanathan. Ross.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Busker.
Aye.
Brashaw.
Aye.
And Keister.
Aye.
The resolution is adopted eight to zero.
Thank you. Next is item number thirteen, which is the adoption of Resolution twenty nineteen zero eight. Could you please read this?
Resolution of the City of Freeport authorizing and approving a software license and service agreement with Ecolane USA Inc.
Director Zupkov.
Thank you, Your Honor. The city of Freeport received a federal grant, was approved by the Illinois Department of Transportation for computerized GPS dispatching software for Pretzel City area transit. This is a capital improvement grant, and again, there's no match required for this grant. Ecolane is one of the vendors that has been approved by the state for this equipment and the contract. The software will allow for live GPS tracking of all of Pretzel City area transit's vehicles that they use on a daily basis and allows for live, real-time rider additions as well as rider cancellations. And that's really gonna improve Pretzel City Transit's ridership efficiency. Will also allow for passengers to pay for the rides with credit cards or with their debit cards. And they'll receive notifications on their smartphones about the arrival of the Pretzel City Transit bus at their location. Really happy to improve the services to the community and are looking forward to implementing the system. I spoke with Forest today, and if approved tonight, they'd, they'd hope to have this in place by approximately May of this year.
Good, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Discussion?
Mayor.
Alderman McLanathan.
Thank you. So this will be paid entirely out of a grant that has no city match?
Yeah, yeah, this, the initial startup costs and the first year of funding will be paid from the federal grant. Moving forward, it'll be paid out of the downstate operating assisting grant.
Okay. And so that's the second part, to fund the program that also comes out of a grant without a city match?
Yes, that's right.
All right, thanks.
Mayor.
Alderman Keister.
Motion to approve. Seconded. Yes.
Okay, we have a motion made by Alderman Keister, seconded by Alderman Ross for the adoption of Resolution twenty nineteen zero eight. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, could you please take the role?
Burberry.
Aye.
Clem.
Aye.
McLanathan. Ross.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Busker.
Aye.
Brashaw.
Aye.
And Keister.
Aye.
That resolution is adopted eight to zero.
Thank you. Next, we will move on to reports from department heads. Finance.
Thank you, Your Honor. The only thing I want to report is that we're heading into the budget season kind of heavy now and looking forward to it.
We're glad you are. Director Zupkov.
Thank you, Your Honor. Great news from our department, seven-figure investment in our community. We issued a one-point-two-million-dollar building permit on Friday. Just a brief overview of that, a manufacturing company that's new to Freeport's, doing a complete interior remodel and adding more loading docks into much of the space Piedmont Hardware's not currently using over at their distribution center building on Lincoln Drive. Of course, very exciting to see that large of an investment in Freeport.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you.
And next would be Public Works.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Looking ahead the next few days, the weather's forecasting a little bit of a winery mix. Both some rain and some sleet coming, so be prepared for a little bit slicker roads. And then with that, with the melting snow around the area, the Peck River is predicting to crest at thirteen-two this weekend, which is two inches into flood stage. So our, hopefully this one stays down. I know you start to get nervous every time this, this river starts to come up, so hopefully this prediction is wrong and it stays, stays well below that. The only thing, the only other thing I have to add is that our negotiator, on our behalf, has acquired all of the easement properties needed for the Peck Path property and moved forward. And we are still on schedule to go out for bid early this year.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor.
Alderman Keister.
Yes, one quick question. How soon will you be able to address some of the potholes and stuff that have been popping up here recently with the cold? I know Walnut Street and a few other places are getting pretty bad. What temperature or weather conditions you need to get started on those?
Our guys are currently hauling all the snows out of the cul-de-sacs right now. As soon as we can get that snow out, we will absolutely start pothole patching. But I do believe I also saw there was a chance for the S-word a little later in the week. I'd like for it to stay away, but there's the potential for that, maybe even into this weekend.
Okay, thank you. Well, as soon as you can get to them, because I know there's sections of Walnut and a few other places that are getting pretty bad right now.
Yes, absolutely.
And next would be Fire.
Thank you, Mayor. This is more of a save the date. We're working with the American Red Cross. On April twenty-seventh, we're gonna be doing a Sound the Alarm event. There's gonna be a lot of media attention to this. We're looking to canvas. We're looking at maybe part of the third and fifth ward, kind of our area that we've determined is a high-hazard area, to try to get smoke detectors into these homes. And they're looking for about a hundred volunteers. We're looking at that day alone doing between three and four hundred homes. So it's gonna be a big event, and I just wanna kind of get it on your minds that that's gonna be out there, so.
And what are you calling that event?
It's called Sound the Alarm.
Okay, thank you. Next would be Police.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to touch briefly on some of the tragic events that happened starting Friday. Domestic violence is, you know, it knows no boundaries, doesn't know any neighborhoods, doesn't know any cities. It was, is very, very tragic. I wanna thank the Freeport Fire Department. They were incredible on the scene immediately. And Chief Allen's guys, you know, performed heroically. But it's, it really kind of highlights the need for high-priority handling domestic situations, going to domestic calls. Our special victims unit, it plays right into that. We do whatever we can, but we, we just can't prevent some of these things from tragically happening. And I guess the only thing we can do is just, you know, respond the way we have been responding. My men and women were very proud of the way they reacted, responded to that. You know, this kind of leads into, the whole community is kind of, you know, kind of jumped on this social media. You know, that's, it's really, it was created to enhance lives, not destroy them, and sometimes tragically it does. So I just want to just remind everybody before they, you know, get on there and post something, you know, make sure they understand what they're talking about. Many times this doesn't help anything. I mean, this family, these, all these families need to grieve. And I think that everyone should just take a breath and let the, now the criminal justice system work their way through that, and it's, it was tragic for all involved. So that's kind of all I have to say about it.
Thank you. Water and Sewer.
Yes, Madam Mayor, nothing tonight.
All right, IT. And Library. Well, thank you very much. So we'll move on to the manager's report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This last week, we've had many events that have been, it's been a very tough week. And our workers have performed outstandingly with the tragedies this weekend. Fire and Police did an outstanding job in responding to those. For those that don't know, Fire also responded to a fire, a house fire, the coldest day where Freeport was the coldest place in Illinois. And then we also had a major lift station break on those days. And Water and Sewer went out and fixed those, and Public Works continued to work through the weekend to get snow removal. But I wanted definitely to recognize the efforts of Fire and Police this weekend with the tragedy, their police quick actions. Captured, both suspects were within custody very shortly. On a brighter note, the pre-disaster mitigation grant went forward, was approved by the state. It is actually, for council's information, it was approved not at the four-million-dollar level, but at the five-point-six-million-dollar level, which is, means we, we will be the only one going forward from the state of Illinois for that. And they set aside each one of the residents. They go forward, made the recommendation to give each one of the residents the thirty-one-thousand dollars on top of the appraised value. Once we have that, we are working with ICMA to bring a fellow on board to help coordinate that grant. Reverend Fungis has been doing workshops. He'll have his second workshop out at the St. Paul Missionary Baptist Church tomorrow night at six o'clock to work on giving some information on buying homes moving going forward. We're gonna continue those each month up until we get the grant information, and we'll keep you posted. We don't anticipate hearing whether we get it until the May, June timeframe. But at that point, on this particular grant, the federal government does notification a little bit different. They post it online, whether you've got it. They don't notify you initially. So, and the last thing, as we talked about the financial cows, just a reminder, we are now in the financial season, so we will have a financial cow before every council meeting at five o'clock. The regular cows will still go at six, so it'll be a little bit of a break. But those cows will be concentrated on financial. So that's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. And just to add a little bit more on to that Homebuyer Seminar, tomorrow night's, by their flyer, they are specifically targeting understanding the mortgage process. So if that's something that those constituents would like to have an understanding, and that's the target. And then also, our next regularly scheduled council meeting would have normally been on February eighteenth. However, that is a holiday. That's President's Day, and the city hall will be closed. So we will have it on Tuesday evening, which is the nineteenth. And lastly, we would just like to extend our sincerest sympathy to all of the families of those that were involved in the tragedy this past weekend. Alderman Burberry.
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Alderman Clem.
Just like to echo what everybody has. Chiefs, both of you, great job over the weekend. And I saw the video of the Sheriff's Patrol announcing this morning they had nothing but kind words to say about you guys. But it is a great job when you apprehend the criminals that quick. Makes everybody feel a lot better, and they, both are tragedies. There's no ifs, ands, or buts about it. And as you say, on the domestic violence, it's just, what can you say about it? It's, you know, worst call for you guys to go on, but God bless you for the work that you did. Just wanted to announce Neighborhood Watch, and you brought up a point here. You said that our council meeting was on what date?
The nineteenth.
Nineteenth, thank you, okay. On the twelfth, at Schwartz Chapel, six oh eight Park Boulevard, we will have the First Ward Neighborhood Watch. We'll have Alderman Burberry will be there, and City Manager Crowe. Anybody's welcome to come. Feel free, and open discussion on all city stuff, and thank you.
Alderman McLanathan.
Nothing further.
Alderman Ross.
Yeah, just a little bit. Just to make remarks as per the public director. Yes, if at any time we do receive the high water, the city is in, has a plan in action to come in action if we have any problems. So if anybody, anyone has any concerns or anything, please feel free to give me a call or call up here to the city, and we'd be more than happy to help you out. Also received a phone call from the housing area on the east, east of the river, on each side of Freeport there. And they also advised me that they would be going around to the residents and advising them of, you know, what to do if they have any problem with the water. But as it states right now, I'm hoping, pray to God that we do not have any problems. Don't want to see another February twenty-second, just a year later. Thank you.
Alderman Parker.
Yes, just real quick, easy, I don't say nothing, but wanted to compliment the street department. They've done a fantastic job with everything we've had with the cold weather, the snow. And I come downtown the other day when they're trying to clean the streets downtown. They're doing a great job with what they had to move. And a little sadder note is to the police and fire, you know. They did the job we're paying them to do. They did a great job. They got the people in custody. But I think you gotta look at the officers, the individual officers that handle them calls. You know, it's not easy to see that, to see the tragedy going on, be able to overlook that and do your job, and then be able to, you know, to pray for them afterwards, because they don't forgive it. They don't shut it off. It's in their minds, so. Thank you very much.
Alderman Busker.
Yes, I guess just echo the thoughts of, thank you guys for your service. Yeah, it is tough going on those calls, especially in a smaller community like this. I mean, some of those, some of those people who'd be brothers or friends, it gets tough. So I really appreciate all that, all that your guys do. And to anyone in the community, you know, don't, yeah, keep things off Facebook, because, I mean, if you don't know the whole story, just don't talk about it. Other than that, I have... you know, don't, yeah, keep things off Facebook, 'cause, I mean, if you don't know the whole story, just don't talk about it. Other than that, I have...
Thank you, Alderman Brashaw.
Thank you, Mayor. I know we don't usually, we try not to mix church and politics, but as a Christian woman, I, I am offering prayers for all the families involved, including the, the victims, their family members, the alleged perpetrators, and their families also, they're all suffering. They have the shame to bear of everything that's happened to their families, and I think as a community, we need to reach out to all. Thank you.
Alderman Keister.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just to kinda build on what Alderman Parker said, kudos to both the police and the fire department for what they did. I know firsthand, from several cases, how traumatic it is to go into those situations, and to be able to keep functioning the rest of the day, and you gotta applaud the guys for doing that, and to have something like that and have the person in custody the same day is a phenomenal effect. So credit goes to your department, Chief, and thank you for your work.
On to item number eighteen, which is public comment. Tommy.
Please, Chief, well, you do a good job doing it, and with part of you that, do you, and when I told Joey Moore, on, Berryville Church is gonna have a Valentine sing at six o'clock, if you're welcome to come, it's gonna be a good time.
Well, thank you, Tommy, I appreciate the invitation.
And when I told Don Parker, he did a good job speaking, so...
Are there any other public comments? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
So move.
Motion made by Alderman Keister, seconded by Alderman Busker, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Have a good evening.